All right, Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. First order of business on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office. So, Linda?
I'm so shy. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Matthew Pacifico.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of mayor.
And that I will discharge the duties of mayor.
In the city of Altoona.
In the city of Altoona.
County of Blair.
County of Blair.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Do you so swear?
I do.
Okay, Mary, I need your signature, please. Can you use my pen? Thank you.
Thanks, boys.
You gonna speak?
Oh.
I would just like to say thank you to all the voters in the city who placed their trust in me for a third and final term as mayor. I look forward to working with the new council to continue all the positive things that we've been doing in the city of Altoona. Thank you.
Okay, ready? I state your name.
I, Jesse Ickes.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will discharge the duties of council member.
In the city of Altoona.
In the city of Altoona.
County of Blair.
County of Blair.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Do you so swear?
I do.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I'll echo the mayor's comments. I will always be appreciative of the voters in the city of Altoona who've placed their trust and confidence in my reelection. It's really a humbling experience. Four years of our lives have gone by very quickly. It's really hard to believe that four years ago that this was taking place then. I want to thank my wife, who's been an incredible supporter of mine. She had her act together long before I did. This is recorded, by the way, Nicole, so you can go back and view that. But we're very fortunate. We've been afforded such an opportunity to build such a beautiful family. Kids, I love you. I know Dad works a lot, works a lot of late hours and early mornings, but obviously, my involvement here, it's not about me. It's about trying to build a city where we can attract young working families to call Altoona home, that we can continue to build upon the community that we've established here. Obviously, as we head through 2024, I would like to particularly thank this council, the redevelopment authority. I'm really looking forward to trying to get, improving the city of Altoona's housing stock, which is, I think, the biggest barrier for the city that we face. 60% of our housing stock is pre-World War II, and for us to be able to attract talent and working professionals to come here and raise and build families, I really feel we lack that mid-market housing. I'm looking forward to the redevelopment authority being successful in improving our housing conditions, and I look forward to doing the people's work here in Altoona. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Shelley Clinage.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of council member.
And I will discharge the duties of council member.
In the city of Altoona.
In the city of Altoona.
County of Blair.
County of Blair.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Do you so swear?
I do.
Thank you. If you would sign here, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their support and believing in me and electing me to this council, and I look forward to working with the current council and serving the residents of the city of Altoona. Thank you.
Okay, now, we will move into the rest of the meeting. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Beatty.
Here.
Councilmember Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Clinage.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Ickes.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here. At this time, we would like to recognize outgoing city councilmember Mitch Cooper and city manager Omar Strom. So, I have some hardware for you both, so if you would please join me at the podium. Omar and Mitch, I would like to, just on behalf of council, thank you both for your dedication to the city, your dedication to doing what needs to be done for the city, and just all of your years of service, both of you. I know, Mitch, you've only been here on council for a few months, but your service to the city goes back well beyond that, so congratulations to both of you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Again, I'd like to thank members of council for giving me the opportunity to work with you the last few months. I find it very interesting, and I feel very comfortable with the council members that are on board right now. I know you had the best interests of the residents of the city of Altoona. I wish you all the best, and thank you for your service.
Well, I'd just like to thank the council members and all the staff I've worked with here. It's been kind of a long journey for me, going through a lot of experiences here with the city. I value them all, and I value all the people that I've interacted with over the years, staff that's here now, staff that have retired or moved on, and prior councils as well. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate what you provided with me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, before we get to public comments, I'm going to read the names of the nominations for the authorities, boards, and commissions. For the Altoona Water Authority, Corey Garrett and Jesse Ickes to fill Omar's remaining term. For the Altoona Housing Authority, Mitch Cooper. The Altoona Parking Authority, David Bittar and myself to fill Omar's vacancy on that board. The Planning Commission, Mike O'Hare, and there's going to be another vacancy on there for the time being. For the Altoona Redevelopment Authority, Ron Beatty. For the AMED Authority, Mark Ritchie. Amtran Authority, Mike Kessling. Code Appeals Board, Jim Patopa. Civil Service Board, Mitch Cooper and John Garitano. The Electrical and Plumbing Examiners Board, Charles Kimmon and Chris Marona. For the Zoning Hearing Board, Matt Gindelsberger. And with that, we will open up the floor for public comment. If you would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes. Oh, yeah, also. Yeah, after the last council meeting, we had an executive session for personnel. Okay, seeing no comment, we will close the floor and move on to the resolutions.
Item A is appointing Councilman Dave Ellis to serve as vice mayor with said term expiring the first Monday of January 2026. Item B is approving the city council meeting attached here, too, for the year 2024 in accordance with the Home Rule Charter and Administrative Code of the City of Altoona. Item C is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council Meeting held Monday, December 4th, 2023. Item D is approving a one-year extension to the city and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's contract agreement to continue participation in the federal special bridge funds inventory and inspection program. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up here on the screen. And further authorizing the city manager or interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is awarding supplemental snow removal services to minor excavating of Altoona in the amount of $25,600 payable from highway aid, and further authorizing the city manager or interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is amending the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program, transferring $77,365.89 from the 2019 program year funds to the 2023 Nehemiah Meal Preparation Project. Item G is appointing Corey Garrett to the Altoona Water Authority for a term of five years. This would be reappointing. For a term of five years, said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. Item H is appointing Jesse Ickes to the Altoona Water Authority to fill the unexpired term of Omar Strom. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2027. Item I is reappointing Mitch Cooper to the Altoona Housing Authority for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. Item J is appointing Mayor Pacifico to the Altoona Parking Authority for a term of five years. Term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. It wasn't you. Oh, I'm sorry, Dave's first, Dave Bittar. Somehow, I lost my cheat sheet and all of this paperwork, so I'm having a hard time. Yeah. Item K is appointing Mayor Pacifico to the Altoona Parking Authority to fill the unexpired term of Omar Strom. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2025. Item L is appointing Michael O'Hare to the Altoona City, reappointing Michael O'Hare to the Altoona City Planning Commission for a term of four years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2028. Item M is appointing Ron Beatty, Councilman Ron Beatty, to the Redevelopment Authority of Altoona for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. Item N is reappointing Mark Ritchie to the AMED Authority for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. That's a reappointment also. Item O is appointing Mike Kessling to the Amtran Authority for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. Item P is re- My, oh, P, Civil Service Board. Reappointing Mitch Cooper to the Civil Service Board for a term of four years. The first one would be John Garitano, I believe, because Mitch is the alternate. So, I would reappointing John Garitano to the Civil Service Board for a term of four years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2028. Item Q is reappointing Mitch Cooper as alternate to the Civil Service Board for a term of four years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2028. Item R is reappointing Charles Kimmon to the Electrical and Plumbing Board for a term of four years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2028. Item S is reappointing Christopher Marona to the Electrical and Plumbing Examiners Board for a term of four years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2028. Item T is reappointing Matt Gindelsberger to the Zoning Hearing Board for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. We're missing James Patopa. Can I add that? Right?
Yeah, well, someone-
At the end? I'll add it at the end, I'll wait till the end.
Just have someone make a motion.
Yeah. Okay. Let me get through these. Item U is accepting the retirement of Omar Strom, city manager, effective January 2nd, 2024. Item V is appointing Joseph Merrill, interim city manager, effective January 2nd, 2024, at a gross monthly base rate of pay at $13,230.75, with the same benefits he is currently receiving through the city of Altoona. Said status as interim city manager shall remain effective until the city council appoints a new full-time city manager. Item W is appointing Derek Swope as interim chief of police, effective January 2nd, 2024, at a gross base rate of pay of $8,230.75, with the same benefits he is currently receiving through the city of Altoona. Said status as interim chief of police shall remain effective until city council appoints a new full-time city manager and Joseph Merrill returns as chief of police. Item X is approving the professional services agreement between the city of Altoona and Omar Strom for the purpose of providing consulting services to the interim city manager and authorizing the interim city manager to execute the agreement and all related documents to effectuate the same. I'd also need a motion to add to the appointments. So, this would be, let me see. This would be reappointing James Patopa to the Altoona Code Appeals Board for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And then I can call the vote for consent.
And Linda, I'd like to pull T for a separate vote.
T, okay. That was Ickes.
No, we didn't.
And it was Ellis. That would be X, that would be item Y. Okay, so I'm going to call for the consent vote on all items excluding item T. This is the consent vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the consent vote passes seven to zero. And the vote on item T is reappointing Matt Gindelsberger to the Zoning Hearing Board for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2029. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
The vote passes six to one. Next, we have an ordinance on the agenda, which is for introduction, and it's an ordinance of the city of Altoona Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends Chapter 690 Utilities of the Altoona City Code, particularly Section 690-2, Statement of Facilities Owned and/or Maintained; Section 690-5, Application for Permit to Erect Poles; Section 690-9, License Fee; Section 690-11, Right of Certain Utility Companies to Construct Underground Systems in the Streets and Sidewalks; Section 690-12, Approval of Plans of Proposed System; Granting of Permission to Construct System; 690-17, Right of City to Inspect and Supervise Systems, Furnishing Desired Information; and Section 690-22, Violations and Penalties to Clarify the Applicability of Chapter 690 and the Penalties for Violation of Chapter 690 to Provide a Reaffirmation of the remainder of Chapter 690 to Provide a Repealer Savings Clause and an Effective Date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh. The second ordinance is for adoption. It was introduced by Councilman Ellis, and it's an ordinance of the city of Altoona, amending the code of the city of Altoona to amend Chapter 405 entitled Lease and/or Conveyance of City-Owned Lands to authorize conveyance of city-owned land located at 1901 North 9th Avenue to the Redevelopment Authority of Altoona for $1. Reaffirm the remainder of Chapter 405, repeal all other ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith, provide severability of provisions, and provide an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Ellis and seconded by Councilman Butterbaugh, and I will call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero.
All right, we'll move on to city manager updates. Omar.
I have nothing to add at this time.
Wow, that was the most jovial update I've ever heard.
Last chance.
Yeah, you can speak your mind now. You might want to take advantage of that.
All right, well, council discussion items. Councilman Kelly.
Just glad to be here, finally. Thank you.
Glad you made it. Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Omar wishing you all the best in retirement and what your plans are in store for the future. To interim manager Merrill and interim police chief Swope, thank you for your willingness to help the city out here during this time. We really appreciate it. Confident that both of you will do well in these positions and helping council navigate the future as far as the manager's position's concerned and maintaining adequate police protection for our community. So, thank you.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yeah, let's start with Omar. Thank you for all you've done for the city. We've been through some crazy times, even before the Act 47, getting into Act 47, getting out of Act 47, and just going through many, many things and getting to work together, and it's been a real honor to work with you. And you never know what you're going to run into when you get into government, but the blessing of working with you is that you've always been honest. I could always trust you with whatever was going on. I always knew that, in whatever position you were in at the time, I always knew we'd get the truth, and I always knew you would do your best, and I really appreciate what you've done for the city and your love for the city and your work here, and wherever you're going next is going to be a blessing to the folks you're going to get to be with. And so, I really appreciate all you've done, so thank you very much. Also, tonight, I'd like to thank Mitch Cooper for your service on council and for all the things you've done for the city, and thank you for your willingness to step up again for the Housing Authority. That's not an easy job, and there's tough decisions to make, and that's a very important board, and they all are, but one of the things that's, we're very fortunate in this town that we have strong leadership on the Housing Authority, because that's a place where if the wrong decisions are made, things can go real bad real quick, but we don't have that issue here in Altoona, because we have good, strong leadership there, and you're part of that, and I thank you for that and really appreciate that. And I know I've told others involved at the leadership positions of the Housing Authority, we don't have to worry about what's going on here, because we know it's in good hands, and you can't ask for more than that. Corey Garrett, it's good to have you here, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the Water Authority. That's a tough place to serve, lots of tough decisions to be made there, and the Water Authority covers a lot of land in Blair County and a lot of customers and areas, and so I really appreciate your willingness to step up, and thanks to all those willing to step up for positions on the authorities and the boards and commissions, and looking forward to a good 2024. This is a good, strong team, and we're really blessed to have the opportunity to work together for the folks of Altoona. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilman Ellis.
Thank you, mayor. Omar, I just want to thank you for your service to the city. You have been, what I believe, an excellent city employee, as you maneuvered through HR and finance stuff and carried that torch for many years, and then when asked three years ago to become city manager, the fact that you stepped up at that point in time is admirable, and you've done a great job maneuvering through the ARP money, and, you know, one of your ideas, what I thought was very useful, that money, because for what its intended purposes were, was the business grants that, you know, you developed that idea, so I thank you and I wish you well in your future endeavors, and I guess I could say enjoy retirement, but you found a second- I guess I could say enjoy retirement, because you found a second career, so. But thank you for everything, and take care. Don't be a stranger. Also regarding the housing authority, I'd like to echo the comments that Councilman Butterbaugh made. I've worked in communities where the housing authority is very weak, and it creates a lot of problems in those communities. And I think we are very blessed here with the authority board and the executive director and deputy director there, that the nonsense is kept to a minimum, and we don't have the issues that our neighboring cities have. So thank you. Mitch, thank you for your service on council.
Councilman Beatty.
Omar, thanks for your help through the last two years. I wasn't here long-term like Dave, but, you know, you've really guided the ARPA money. You've done a great job covering for shortages in HR and finance and done an admirable job. I'd just like to say, you know, to the citizens of Altoona, you know, in 2023, we finished the use for the land bank. I think we really have everything in place now to move forward. We acquired two houses for rehab through the redevelopment authority, which I'm excited to get started in 2024 on those. The city manager, you know, we had a good, solid city manager, but now we have an interim, which is, I'm confident will be very solid also. And, you know, we just need to give a little bit better thought. You know, we've been through quite a few city managers in the last eight or 10 years, you know, interims, and I think we need to come up with a better system to work with the city manager to help them be successful and then also help serve the citizens of Altoona in a more organized fashion. In 2024, we formed a management committee to redefine how the city manager works with council. I think that's gonna be an important step to give the next city manager success and have measurements of success for him and for the city and a little bit more accountability to the citizens. I think it'll be something that will be a blessing for everybody concerned. I think blight enforcement is gonna be our number one. In fact, the first work session we have, I'd like that to be centered around blight enforcement and how we move the city forward and create livable housing, mid-range housing for the citizens. And then, you know, as we move into the city manager committee, you know, we really need to have a forward goal for what we want Altoona to be in five years, 10 years, you know, the success that we can accomplish by defining what we do. And just thank you and have a happy new year.
Councilwoman Clinitch.
Omar, I haven't known you that long, but thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to sit up here with the fellow council members, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make the right decisions for our city and to continue the growth in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the council committee assignments now. Okay, so the first one is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I would like to remain on that one, and so would Councilman Butterbaugh. The GADAC Board, again, same. I would like to remain on that one, and so would Councilman Butterbaugh. And the Blair County 24-member Advisory Committee, Councilman Butterbaugh would like to stay on that one. Blair County Community Action Agency, that is currently vacant. Maybe we hold off on that until we see what the direction of Blair CAP is. Unless anybody wants to take community action. All right. Central Blair Rec Commission. I would like to remain on that. Councilman Ellis, would you, you've only, you've only got to experience one meeting there. Would you like to do a full? Okay. The South Central Blair County Enterprise Zone Advisory Committee, that's a defunct one, so you don't have to do anything there. ABCD Corp, that is in the bylaws there, that that's for the mayor and manager, so we will leave that as is. The Intermunicipal Relations Committee, Councilman Beatty is currently on there, but I think you would like to step away from that one. So Shelley, would you like to take the IRC? Okay, thank you. Pyramid Healthcare, I believe, did, I don't know if we hadn't, yeah, we did.
It was Councilman Carper.
Yeah, that's right. They meet quarterly at 4:30.
I'll offer.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ickes. And then the Salvation Army Adult Rehabilitation, which is currently Chief Merrill and Councilman Ellis.
Intended block.
Oh, nice.
All right.
Hey, so like, some of them where it's manager, that means Chief Merrill, like ABCD.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
All right, so that wraps up the council committee assignments. Move into questions from the media now. Bill?
Sorry. Could, could somebody talk about the process of replacing Omar? Like, what's, how you're gonna go about it?
We are taking applications now from interested individuals. We will be convening a group at some point to start reviewing those applications and narrowing it down to a few. And then council will interview those individuals and make a decision from there.
Do you have a target date or an approximate target date for filling it permanently?
Ideally, like, before March 1 would be what we would like to do, but, you know, if we have to go beyond that, then that's what we have to do as well.
Ron, could you talk a little bit or elaborate a little bit, I guess, on the, on what you said about a committee that is going to be looking into the, maybe possibly redefining the city manager's position?
Whenever, my understanding was, whenever the charter was written and we went to this form of government, there was never a real defined measurement of success for performance reviews. Nothing that the business world would do to measure success and to reward success both. And I think the big problem we had was, you know, council would have priorities, but they wouldn't be conveyed, and they wouldn't be conveyed in a manner that we could accomplish the things that we needed to. So going forward, we did form a committee of business people to look at how we did it and how we would implement a new manager's position. I just find that it was unfair to Omar and probably the prior city managers to work under, not really knowing what their job, what their performance would be measured on. You know, there were no performance reviews, nothing that any structured business would do. And I think Altoona just has to run a little different if we're gonna be successful. I think we need to have reportability to department heads. We need to have a measurement there also. You know, if a citizen calls in and makes a complaint, I think there needs to be a follow-through clear to the city manager to make sure these things are handled and completed. I think Altoona will succeed in ways we've never imagined if we structure success through the city manager's position and then down into the workforce. And I think it makes it a lot better for people to work when you know what's expected of you and rewarded based on, you know, the results of your labor. And I think it's probably gonna take a little bit longer than three months. I think we're probably gonna be into June, if we're lucky. I think we need to take the time and do it right so that everybody can succeed.
Do the other council members agree with what Ron said? If you care to say.
Well, we're gonna do our best to, you know, move forward and find the right person for the job. And Lord willing, that will be in the timing that's necessary. I'd rather make a good decision than a hurried one or make sure we do the right thing and hopefully sooner rather than later, if it works out that way.
Is this going to be open to, or are you inviting, I guess, both in-house people and people outside the organization for this?
My understanding is that the application's available, one, I think it's on the city's website, and two, I think it's advertised. Is it advertised through PML, mayor, as well? So, I mean, I would imagine an internal and external applicants could apply.
Are you planning, I'm not sure how to ask this exactly right, correctly, I guess, but are you recruiting, actually reaching out to people who might be good?
You interested, Bill? Is that what I'm hearing?
And I could do it anyway, so.
Bill, I'm not gonna say there's formal recruiting going on, but those of us who have contacts in other communities have reached out and asked for potential rising stars.
So you have reached out now?
Yeah, I mean, but it's nothing formal. It was all simply informal. But the process has been advertised. Omar was gracious enough to take the lead on that, to get it advertised, and, so my understanding, our applications are coming in.
Well, and Bill, we may be looking at hiring a consultant to help us structure what the city manager's compensation and measurement of success is gonna be. So that'll probably be done here shortly. And we just wanna, like you said, we just wanna do it right, because the whole city really depends on how the manager moves and how we relay what the priorities are that we set. Nothing different than a board of directors. You know, a board of directors sets how the company approved or attains the goals that they have set. And I think having everything in writing and having preset goals that we would set in October, November of the year before, and then measuring how the success, how they were implemented, how successful they are, that would just bring a whole level of organization that we haven't seen, you know, in the past.
What was Derek Swope's previous position? He was deputy chief, right? Okay. And if anyone, anybody would care to say, what was the process by which Joe was chosen as the interim?
We looked at internal candidates for this and how we were gonna proceed with this, and we're very fortunate that we have some very strong department heads, that we could have gone a couple different directions here. But after consensus with council, we decided that it would work best in the police department and simply have Chief Merrill act as the interim manager and then Deputy Chief Swope handle the day-to-day ops.
He surmised that quite well, by the way.
I know a number of you made comments on Omar's tenure as the manager. Anybody want to add anything more on that?
I will add also that he was gracious enough in, as he proceeds into his second career, to still provide time as a consultant to aid in Chief Merrill's day-to-day transition into this, so.
Okay. Could, to change the subject here, could somebody explain the purpose of the introduced ordinance?
Yeah, what, Bill, the whole purpose of the, of that chapter was utilities that the city is able to regulate would be subject to that particular chapter. That was the intent of the ordinance, and the purpose of this is to basically clarify that and make that very clear. There are certain utilities that we don't have the ability to regulate. That'd be like, for example, you know, the gas company, electric company. But telecommunications, communications, we can, and the purpose of these amendments is just to, you know, clarify that.
Well, I didn't really look at it too much. You mean, like, are you talking about, like, clarify what they can do as far as stringing wires on poles and digging?
And basically clarifying how the city regulates that. And it's a process where, there's a process, if you're gonna be putting in new facilities in the city's right away, the process of how you do that, if you need to erect poles to do that, how that is done. If you are one of these entities and you have facilities within the rights way of the city, the requirement to provide, you know, maps of where your, where your facilities are located and, you know, annual fees, things of that nature. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how critical or how important this is, but how were the amounts that Joe and Derek are gonna be paid and calculated? Were they just, like, prorated to what they're earning now, or?
They were, they were mutually agreed to between, you know, the discussions that we agreed to and what each of them was willing to accept for their interim positions.
Ron, if you care to say, why did you vote no for Matt Gindelsberger for the zoning board? Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Meeting is adjourned.